Welcome to the Bothell City Council Meeting of November 21, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All councilmembers are here except Councilmember Freed, who won't be here this evening, and Councilmember Sandberg, who's gonna be late, but she's gonna be here. The first item on our agenda is the meeting agenda approval. Is there any changes to tonight's agenda? Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to pull AB 17-183 and AB 17-184.
Any other changes to tonight's agenda? I'm getting over cold, so I apologize if I start crackling. Seeing none, how about the projected agenda? Councilmembers, Spivey?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have to work on the 5th, and as of this point, I have to work on the 12th also, but I'm hoping to have somebody come in for me at least for a little while. And then, on the 12th, looking at it, we have a reception, it looks like, from 5:30 to 6:00. And I don't know if these are in order, but the outgoing council member recognition at the end of the meeting, I'm imagining that people are gonna have family wherever come in, and could that recognition be more towards the beginning or at the beginning of the meeting versus the end for that reason?
So I had the same question. They were, the staff were proposing to try something new because they thought maybe, and you're one of the people leaving, but actually, you're the only person here that's leaving, so you get a pick. You'd like, you'd rather have it come after the...
I think right at the beginning of the meeting was, and that's how we've traditionally done it, and so, I would, at least I know my family would appreciate it.
Okay. City Manager, you're okay. Yep. All right, done deal?
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
I'd like to add to the projected agenda a discussion about potentially creating a design review committee, and the reason I'm asking for, this would be for the new year, is that we will soon be looking at interviews for our existing boards and commissions, and so I wanted to try to get this in prior to those interviews so we could advertise. But basically, a design review committee reviews and approves the design of significant new development projects, and considers things such as design, colors, lighting signs, and other design-related issues, and can include people such as architects, maybe the Landmark Board for Downtown Landscape Architects, or community development staff. So, just asking if we could have that added to a projected agenda prior to advertising for boards and commissions.
Okay. City Manager, is that a time, go ahead, we can do it on her end. Does everybody feel okay about putting that on the projected agenda up here? See, head nods. Councilmember Spivey, you're okay? Okay. It's added. Is there any other changes to the projected agenda? Seeing none, we'll move into the review of public engagement opportunities. Did we find some? Oh, we have some. The Department of Ecology is seeking public comment regarding the Bothell Service Center cleanup site now through December 18th. For more information, visit our website, type DOE, and I'll bet it come right up. Bothell Tree Lighting Festival, Sunday, December 3rd, 4:45 to 7:00 p.m. Tree lighting at 5:00 p.m. at 10100 Main Street. Holiday Wine Beer and Spirits Walk, Saturday, December 9th, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Main Street, tickets at bothellchamber.com. Okay, next is the council committee city manager reports, and we do have one memo from the city manager in our packet. Did you want to go first then, City Manager? Please.
I'd be happy to. I don't really have a report. I was asked by the city council to provide an update on the sale of Country Village. Country Village is a privately-owned retail center on private property. They've entered into a agreement with a private development company. Us and the community are not privy to those documents or those negotiations, and so I just provided an update on what's currently happening with Country Village, and if that agreement were to fall through, some potential opportunities that the city could look at in the future.
Okay, great. Was there any questions on the memo? Council, seeing none. Okay, is there any other committee reports? Deputy Mayor?
So, starting, let's see, Snoomish County Committee for Improved Transportation, I just wanted to let everyone know that I went and was a guest speaker representing the North 405 Stakeholder Group, and asking for stakeholders to join our group and/or send letters to the legislature and Sound Transit, asking for the completion of the 405 Master Plan, and some additional park-and-ride facilities in the area to back up our 405 BRT. So we were looking for business members in particular. And then Snoomish County tomorrow meeting, we voted to approve the agenda bill supporting the updated Regional Growth Center Framework by PSRC, Growth Management Policy Board, and basically, they changed to allow regional growth centers that weren't meeting targets, such as Canyon Park, to develop plans for compliance. So, that was a good outcome for us. On the PSRC Transportation Policy Board, we have projects, we were looking at projects recommended for funding through the 2017 Transportation Alternatives Program. There weren't any Bothell projects that made the cut, however, there was the one project, which is the Bridge at Bothell Landing, that made the contingency list, and that's $17.5 million that have to be allocated. And then, last week, we hosted the Domestic Violence Initiative Task Force, which I'm on, and I thought it would be worthy for people to understand some of the issues. So currently, we talked about a firearm surrender program. King County approved $600,000 to support the gun surrender of domestic abusers. We're the first in the nation to follow through on gun seizures by obtaining warrants. Because there is no gun registry, it makes it difficult for law enforcement to know who has guns, and so they typically just sign an affidavit saying they don't have them, but now they're following through on some information that they received from the people they've abused. And wanted to note that Bothell Police Chief Cummings was part of the effort that led to the creation of this regional unit, so kudos and thank you to Police Chief Cummings. Some added information, the rate of lethal gun violence against women in the U.S. is 1.11 per 100,000. The next closest country is .31 per 100,000. So we're more, we're basically triple what the next closest country is in terms of lethal deaths. Children are the most common victims of domestic mass shootings, at 42%. And I think we all know that lately, the correlation between domestic abusers that go out and then decide to kill tens and hundreds of people. We had a presentation on strangulation. Prior victims of attempted strangulation are seven times more likely to become homicide victims, and on the continuum of violence, it proceeds from slap, to a punch, to a kick, to a weapon, to strangulation, and then death. Unfortunately, for 50% of strangulation victims, there is no visible injury, and the first thing to go, as far as your brain function, is memory, so it's very hard to prosecute. Let's see. And then finally, on the East Side Transportation Partnership Meeting, we had an update on the Sound Transit East Link construction, which is currently on schedule for 2023, and that's, for people that don't know, the light rail construction into Bellevue and over to Redmond. And that's my update.
All right, thanks. Is there any other council committee updates? Nope. Councilmember Spivey?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. LTAC met today, and we went over some RFPs in regards to branding for our Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, a new branding for the Explore Bothell program. And so we went through those, and we will be, there was, I believe, four people that gave RFPs, and we selected three to go through a form of interview process, more than likely a Skype-type interview, and that will be probably occurring in January-ish at this point, but be moving forward on that, and that's gonna have some exciting things coming along with it, and, there's Danae over there. I don't know, am I missing anything with that? That's just kind of where we are right now, but we're moving forward on that branding project, and so the new committee members can update you when that comes in probably January, because our next meeting will be after council's last meeting of the year.
Okay, thank you. Any other committee reports? Seeing none, we'll go into visitor comments. So I read the thing out of the protocol manual, it says, "Each person addressing the council will give his or her name in an audible tone of voice for the record, unless the council grants for their time shall limit the address to three minutes. No person other than the council and the person having the floor will be permitted to enter into any discussion, either directly or through the member of the council, without the permission of the mayor." And the first one is Marlene Hofer? Hofer?
I probably don't need a PA system, I'm pretty loud. Marlene Hofer, co-owner of Steve's Cafe on Main Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. I'm obviously here for the tables and chairs allocation in front of buildings, and the documentation that has been given in the past, we have been there 20-plus years, thank you, and it was dedicated that we were grandfathered in with no fee for our tables and chairs. And then, when we were at a couple meetings here with Don, he said, "Not everything is forever." So, we're saying, "Okay, fine." Now, we will have been 10 months plus behind a fence, and literally, behind a fence, and if you could grant at least one year of no fee, I realize that Kirkland and Bellevue and Redmond have a wonderful outside dining, it works well for them. We don't know yet, we haven't tried it. So we'd like to, we, as our cafe, and I don't know how many other people are gonna be behind us, would like to have at least one year, no fee, for the tables and chairs outside for dining. Now, Don did mention that the timeframe would be from March to September. Well, we can't take our tables and chairs in, we have no place to put them. And the people, on nice days in the winter, people come by with their dogs, and they continue to sit out there and eat, or just sit and have a cup of coffee. So, we will have a large fee of buying a new table and chairs, which look good, instead of our old crappy table and chairs, and plastic chairs, but we'd just like to have there be no fee. We are real small, and I don't know how many people the council have been in, but we have only eight tables. So we're pretty small. And the fees that Don mentioned, he said, would be cut in half for the first year, but we're still asking that there be no fees, and that there be no restrictions on our tables and chairs being out there. Let us have it for the whole year, because people enjoy just coming and sitting, and even other restaurants have tables and chairs out all year for just people to come and sit. What's that yellow light mean? I'm supposed to hush?
It'll beep at you when it's time. That means you have 30 seconds.
I got 30 seconds. Okay. Anyway, I want to thank David, and Duda, and Nick, and all the people that have helped us through this, or advised us, "Oh, hush," or have let us know what's going on, okay? And happy Turkey Day to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. The next is Susan Gardner.
I'm Susan Gardner. I, my husband owns a shop on Main Street, and so I've become enmeshed in the fabric of Bothell, downtown Bothell specifically. I'm co-producer of the Tree Lighting Festival with Nancy Pippenich. I initiated the saving of the engraved bricks on Main Street, but technical issues outside of the realm of private citizens kind of got in the way of that. Those bricks will be resurrected next year. And then, I've also, with my husband Richard Olson, managed to raise the funds to bring back the "Welcome to Bothell" sign. So I'm deeply enmeshed in Bothell, and I'm here to speak for the Main Street merchants who are going to be impacted by the fees, particularly those on Item 12 of your schedule for the 2018 fees. Up front, I recommend that that just be stricken for at least two years, if they ever need to be imposed, except for the moving of the bollards, which most likely won't happen. I haven't heard of any eatery that finds that that will pencil out. So, the merchants have been subjected to diversions of their customers from Main Street since the Crossroads Project got underway. Then there was the Multway Boulevard, then there was the fire, and now there's the Main Street revitalization. My husband's clients from the very first project have tried to figure out how they can get to his business, and other businesses are suffering the same difficulty with their clients trying to do business in town, and some of them just have just said, "We're taking a break while Main Street revitalization is going on." I suggest that the fees and sidewalk rentals that is being proposed are just a way to push paper. You create paper, they say they need it to pay the staff to push the paper. Why do there need to be permits, anyway? There have been business conducted on Main Street, sidewalk sales, outdoor eating, without the need for permits. We don't have the critical mass in downtown Bothell to support the business that you see in Seattle, to which we're being compared, or Kirkland, or Livermore, California. So, why impose that? And then there's the parking issue, no one can park in Bothell either, so what are their people supposed to do? So, I just think that Number 12 should be stricken, except for moving the bollards, because that requires physical labor. Why create paperwork to hire staff to process the paperwork? Thank you.
Thanks. Next is Paul CAV, I believe, Cavano? Cavano? How do you say it? Kavanaugh? That's an N?
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello. Yes, I'm Paul Kavanaugh. I own Woodlawn Optical on Main Street, and I'm just here to support what Susan and Marlene just said, too. We've had a rough go of it on Main Street, no question about it, you know, for the past, what, four, five, six years, really? And then, with what's going on now, it's tough. You know, we're kind of hoping that things would be wrapped up by Thanksgiving, and of course, that's not happening, and I understand there's things that happen, and I think a lot of us realize that, you know, things can go wrong and delay the construction and that sort of thing. But, to help mitigate some of that, I agree with Susan, at least give us a couple years without a fee to use sidewalks, because people have to, like I said, pencil out if it's gonna work or not. I, myself, will probably never do that and use it, but certainly, the other merchants do, and if they're successful, it makes the whole core more successful. And that's basically what I'm here to do, to support what they're saying. I think Susan's got it right. I think, you know, just imposing a fee for pushing papers seems silly. Moving the bollards is a different scenario altogether, because that's physically moving something, and then, you know, I could see that taking effect. But anyway, thanks for your support, and I will say, you know, the city's been pretty good about helping us out down there, and I appreciate that. But, any other support along this line could really help. I really feel like that would make, you know, a lot of merchants down there happy, if we could at least get a break for a couple years on this. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have no other signup sheets. Does anybody else want to give public comment? Seeing none, okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So there was items, AB 17-183 and AB 17-184 pulled from the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the remainder?
It's all moved.
Second.
Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Councilmember Agnew to approve the remainder of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. So Deputy Mayor, you pulled AB 17-183, Resolution for Establishing Policies and Procedures for Public Art Expenditures and the Implementation of the 1% for the Arts Program. Go ahead.
I did. My main reason for pulling the agenda item is because I would like to strike Item 8.3, the jury selection, from the process. We have an arts commission, those are dedicated people who have an interest in art. I think, in my opinion, it would be laborious to create a new jury every time we wanted to pick a piece of art. I would propose that there are alternatives to involve the public, such as a public notice for participation or public hearing, and so for that reason, I'd like to pull 8.3 out of the suggested policy.
I don't know how I say it, I'm trying to get there.
Would you like me to read it?
So it was Section 8.3, but there's also, isn't it, the jury is referenced elsewhere than 8.3?
Oh geez. Well, yeah, it is, in the final approval of artists. So, under final approval, which is 8.4, it does reference the jury convening, so I suppose we would just pull the sections that talk about the jury convening and the jury recommending, and just have the arts commission do the final review and the final recommendation.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? There's no motion, it's just, City Manager, did you have input on why the jury was an idea?
One of the things that we thought was, if there was an interest in possibly placing a piece of art in a park, or maybe in the downtown, that those vested in those areas, so like the Parks and Rec Commission, maybe the downtown merchants, they would like to have the opportunity to be part of the selection process, so we just thought there might be some opportunities for collaboration in those areas. That was one of the things we were thinking of, rather than keeping it just to the commission, more an opportunity to cross-collaborate.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you. I like this, and in some ways, I would almost want to change it to some of these positions that is recommended here as a shall. I think having a city employee from Public Works, if it's gonna be mounted and installed, having the experts there and to know about, you know, what infrastructure's in that area or wants to be placed is something important, or what infrastructure may be needed to support that. And so, having people there to provide expertise, not necessarily on the artwork itself, but on the location, what's needed for at that location. And I agree with the City Manager, that more people involved from a different perspective, I think, is helpful, and I like the fact that it included at least one artist. Our commission may not ever have an artist on it, and so I just think that there's some good things in here, and it's gonna have a commission member on there, so I think it's a good thing, and it creates more community involvement, but we at least have to have somebody from Public Works on there to make sure that the installation side of it is done in the proper way, and it doesn't cover up infrastructure, or needs more infrastructure, et cetera.
Okay. Any further discussion, or is there a motion? Councilmember Agnew, did you, your button's on. Your mic's on. Never mind.
I'll move the recommended action.
All right, it's moved. Is there a second to move the staff recommended action? Second by Councilmember McNeil, is there any discussion on the motion, other than what's already been said? Is your motion, did you want to?
She's...
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
So, I'd like to make an amending motion to pull the jury selection portion out of it. I don't have a problem with Public Works being involved, I just think we took the time to interview arts commission members, most of them are artists. They're obviously dedicated individuals who are taking the time to be at monthly meetings. I've suggested some other ways, public notice for participation or public hearings to involve people. I'm not trying to pull people out of the process, it's just, having been on a board, I know how long it takes already to get stuff done, and this, to me, will probably add two to three months in a process, and I guess I'm just thinking it's unnecessary bureaucracy. So I guess that's my amending motion, is to pull the jury selection, and have the selection be approved by the Arts and Festivals Commission with a public hearing to reach out to the public.
So I'll second your motion. You've already talked to me here, amending motion. Does anybody want further discussion on the amending motion? Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you. If the idea is to streamline, then having public announcements and setting dates for public to come in, I just don't see that as any more of a streamline than the arts commission being involved in selecting a jury that they think represents a good cross-section of the citizens to do this, you know, again, taking the time to notice and have staff put together what they need to put together for that, and I'm not seeing the less bureaucracy. And I think the expertise of the Arts and Festival Committee, their expertise in selecting this jury, I think is important to have them weigh in on it.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? I'm sorry, were you done?
Yes.
All right. Is there any more discussion on the amending motion, which is to strike, well, the jury, striking the jury out of the protocol? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote. So that fails four to two, with Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor and the mayor in the minority there. We're back to the underlying motion to approve the staff recommended policy. Is there any further discussion on their underlying motion? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously, Councilmember Freed absent and excused, so we're on to AB 17-184, which is the City Center Hotel, First Amendment to the Development Agreement, and Deputy Mayor, you pulled this one?
Thank you, I did. So I just wanted to make comment, because in the past few months, we've had a couple of these contracts come back to us for extensions. And while I appreciate that the Bothell Hotel LLC is moving forward with their work and designs are in review, I'm disappointed in the delay, and any further contract delays, I would expect to come back with fees for the loss of revenues imposed, so I just wanted to, I would think it's important that we treat all developers fairly, and so that, I just wanted to put that on the record.
Is there any further discussion on this item or motion? Councilmember Sandberg?
The city manager provided us some information about previous contracts, and in one of our lots negotiation, it was Lot O, there was a $200,000 extension fee, and so I don't think that, at this point, we can levy an extension fee with this particular transaction, but I think that we should include that as a provision in the event that they want to extend again. So this is their one extension, it'll cost $200,000 to extend again, and so I'm prepared to make that amending motion if, unless... so I'm prepared to make that amending motion unless someone else wants to do that.
So did you make the motion?
No, I was just waiting for the rest of the discussion.
Did anybody else want to discuss this? No. So I was just going to chime in too. The city manager did send us two pieces, I think, information. It was from Main Street Properties, who own a few different properties downtown, or bought it from us. And then this one. And they're, like Councilmember Sandberg just illustrated, is that we've done quite a few extensions after extensions. And I guess we're trying to make a point that we want to get out of the business of trying to purchase and sell properties. So we'd like them to build and stick with the agreement in which they are under with the city. So I'm supportive of this amendment. I believe this will be the last one, in my opinion, that I'm going to be supportive of without some sort of ramifications to the other party, because enough's enough. So. Anybody else want to add? Chairman, Councilmember Spivey?
Do we have a motion yet?
No, we don't.
Okay. Then I would move the recommended action to include any future extensions would have a fee associated with it.
Second.
So it's moved by Councilmember Spivey, seconded by the Deputy Mayor to approve, well, basically approve the staff recommendation for the authorized the city manager to sign the first Amendment to the City Center Hotel Development Agreement in substantially the same form as presented, with the stipulation that an additional extension will result in a negotiated fee.
Correct.
Is that good? Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. We are on to public hearings. So AB-17-185, public hearing to consider ordinance stating 2008 property tax levy for King and Snohomish Counties. And we have Maureen Wertz to give us the staff presentation. Oh, I'm officially opening the public hearing. Ms. Wertz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. The city's maximum regular levy limit for property taxes is determined annually by the county assessors. Since 2002, per Initiative 747, state law limits the amount the city can increase its property tax to 1% over the actual amount collected in the previous year. For 2018, a 1% increase in the property tax levy amounts to $134,613, or $5.44 on a $400,000 property. I'm going to put a slide up here. Hopefully you can see okay. For an example, in 2017, a home in King County with an assessed value of $400,000 paid $4,370 in property tax. And as you can see there, you have the different pieces of the pie. You have King County portion showing the percent of that $4,000, and then a dollar amount. You have the school district, Washington State, some other smaller districts, and then you have the city of Bothell. The city of Bothell's portion makes up 17.36%, or $759. $759 provided the homeowner with a full range of municipal services: police and fire, streets and sidewalks, parks and recreation, planning and zoning, municipal court, and general government administration services. Now, if you would take a look at the ordinance in Section 2, I'd like to clarify, Section 2 of the ordinance tonight in your packet, about the third or fourth line down, I guess it's the fourth line down, it states in the ordinance, an increase of 0.86%. The reason that this ordinance does not state an increase of 1% is based upon a new requirement from the King County Assessors Office this year. And the 0.86% is actually the 1% minus prior year adjustments. Therefore, it nets out to 0.86% from last year's actual regular levy. So just to reiterate, we are, or we would receive the complete 1% increase in 2018. It's just the way that they wanted us to do it and write it in the ordinance. Due to the prior year adjustments, you cannot consider that as part of last year's actual levy for the purposes of calculating the 1%. Then I'd also like to state that the property tax revenue accounts for roughly 27% of the city's general fund revenues. The 2017-18 adopted budget assumes a 1% annual property tax increase in each year of the biennium. Bothell's levy ordinances are due to King and Snohomish Counties by November 30. Staff's recommended action this evening is for adoption of the city's 2018 property tax levy for King County and Snohomish County. That concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions Council may have.
Is there any questions from Council? Councilmember Sandberg?
Do you have a similar graphic for Snohomish County, or is it pretty much the same?
It's very, very similar. So I don't have one person in Snohomish County, but it is just off very few percentages. Yeah, I could come back with that another time.
Any other questions? I have a question for you. So the, so the 0.86% next year, that'll equate to $134,613 more than we collected last year.
Correct.
And then, and it says, the new construction provisions of RCW, we're going to collect an additional $354,925 in 2018. So is that new construction that just came on to the tax rolls?
That is new construction. For new construction, that it came on after the assessors made their assessments for 2017. So let's say they assessed all the property in, for example, maybe August or September. Anything that didn't get on the tax roll for 2017, that is new construction, and that amount is based on 2017's levy rate, which is a little bit different than what they're going to use for the 1% for 2018.
So like when a new house gets built, when do they start paying taxes?
This part of the new construction that didn't get, they would get it in 20, well, 2017, this leftover part would be 2017, so it didn't get on the 2017 tax roll, so it would be for 2018.
Okay. So is it like occupancy, they get a permit for, or, you know, the city says it's inoccupable, they build a new house. And then is it occupancy, is that when all of a sudden they start, you know, the assessor gets notified that they need to start paying taxes? Or is it, you know, just at the first of the year, whatever year they're built?
I believe, does community development know how that works? I know we report to them.
Generally speaking, the assessment is done the first part of January every year. And depending on who owns the property at that time, that's the, that's the party that gets assessed. And so if it's in mid-construction, then usually it's the developer, the home builder, that pays that property tax at that point, unless it's an owner builder. So, you know, it's just a matter of when the house is finished and syncs up with the assessment and when it's assessed. But generally, it occurs the first part of January of every year.
Okay, thanks. And then I just have one last question. So do we have an estimate in dollars about how much it costs in 2018 to provide the same city services that we provided in 2017? Just kind of to compare with the, you know, we're bringing in an additional amount of money.
Do I have that?
If we approve this, excuse me.
You know what? I don't have that handy, I don't think. I apologize, Mayor. I don't have, so you're asking what, let me just make sure, would you repeat the question?
So we are going to provide services out of our general fund, which is funded by property taxes, like you said, like 27%, was it? And so our overall operating budget goes up every year because the cost of services and supplies, gas, everything costs more money. So it's hard to explain this to people, because it's always like, oh, well, our cost of giving the services goes up 3%, but we only can raise property tax 1%. And that's not an apples-to-apples comparison. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to help people and myself understand, if you raise 300, your tax, property taxes, $354,925 from 17 to 18, does that cover the cost of providing the services that we provide with that money? And if it doesn't, then where do we get the money to keep it funded?
Well, that's a good question, yeah. Because on property taxes, we are limited to the 1%. You know, new construction helps bring in more money, sales of property in our general fund. The top three revenue sources are property, sales tax, and utility taxes. New constructions, new homes, you know, they help increase all of those revenues. But that's generally, I think, a dilemma for governments, is trying to keep those services at that level of service. And we are limited in many ways by different types of regulations.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Spivey?
I just, maybe I could help weigh in on that. When, before Initiative 747, municipal government and different, you know, special districts were able to raise property tax, the amount of CPI up to a maximum of, I want to say it was about 5%. Initiative 747 rolled it back to a 1%. Then anything over 1% has to go to a vote of the people. And it was, as I recall, intended to be a mechanism so the people could decide how much they were being taxed without government just running it up. The negative of it was, every time CPI came out and it was more than 1%, then we would have to run, to keep up with inflation, we would have to run a special election to vote to go above that. And those have their own costs on top of it. So that's kind of the background, as I recall. And so to answer your question, how do we keep up with inflation? Really, we have to either be creative, or we have to go to vote with the people to keep up with inflation.
Thank you. Council, Deputy Mayor?
So am I right in remembering that the cost for staffing typically goes up with CPI about 3% a year?
Yeah.
And how much of the budget is personnel?
It's approximately 80% on salaries.
So there's no way that those lines are going to continue in the same slope?
And we're a service delivery, basically, yeah.
And how many, I had heard also, I think Director Shackman had mentioned that the former council went seven years without taking the 1%. Is that correct?
It's seven or eight, yeah.
So we weren't even getting the 1% extra per year for seven years?
Correct.
And so now, we've come to the point where it's caught up with us.
Yeah. We lost that compounding during those years, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Oh, and there's a, sorry, this is a public hearing. Is there any other questions of staff before I go to the, see if there's, I have nobody signed up. Does anybody want to give testimony on the tax increases, property tax increase? Seeing nobody. Okay. Is there any other questions from Council, or do you want to make a motion? We're good, okay.
I move to adopt the city's 2018 property tax levy for King County and Snohomish County.
Second. It's moved by Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew, to adopt the city's 2018 property tax levy for King and Snohomish County. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. It automatically closes if we vote on it. So I kind of like keeping the public hearing open, after the last few experiences, until we vote on it. So, next one is AB 17-186, public hearing to consider adoption of ordinance establishing an EMS levy in the Snohomish County portion of Bothell for 2018. This is really fun. Okay, so now I need to adjourn, do I need to have a motion to adjourn? Or can I just adjourn automatically?
You can suspend.
Just follow the script here. Adjourn to the EMS board. All right. And now I'm going to open, I'm the chair, in opening the public hearing for the EMS board. There's a staff presentation by Maureen Wertz.
Here we are.
Here we are. Didn't go far. Go ahead.
Okay, the Bothell Urban Emergency Medical Services District Board was established in 2005 to provide equitable EMS services throughout the city. The city is unable to collect a citywide EMS levy because King County already collects an EMS levy. City residents who live in King County pay for EMS through King County EMS levies. In November of 2017, voters in Snohomish County approved a new six-year EMS levy for 2018 through 2023. This levy provides the continuation of funding for emergency medical services to the Snohomish County portion of the city. The rate is equal to the rate collected for Bothell residents in King County. For 2018, the EMS levy amounts to approximately $134 on a $400,000 property. This EMS levy will fund continuation of vital EMS and paramedic services through 2023. The city's aid and paramedic units are part of the fire department services. Bothell contracts with Shoreline Medic One for advanced life support services. Residents are served by the enhanced 911 dispatch agencies, giving them immediate access to medical aid when needed. The council's adopted 2017-2018 biennial budget includes a $1.2 million in emergency, or excuse me, in EMS levy revenues for 2018. The EMS ordinance is due to Snohomish County by November 30. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, and this obviously passed the, is the election certified?
It will be certified next Tuesday?
November 28, yes.
November 28.
Do you know what our percentage is?
I do not.
For pass fail?
The last time I looked.
Last time, it was passing.
70 to 30%, I think.
Oh, that's going to pass. Okay. Let's see here. So public hearing, did I open the, so I'm officially opening the public hearing, if I didn't do that already. I apologize if I didn't, of the EMS board. Is there any public comment on the EMS levy? Seeing none. Is there any discussion on Council? Seeing none. Councilmember Spivey?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Maureen. Just to kind of go along with what was presented by staff, is that we get our paramedics from King County EMS, and we get our training, our fire department gets their training from King County EMS. To provide equitable service to all of our citizens, we've got an interlocal agreement, or an MOU with King County EMS, to provide those paramedic and EMT services to all of the city, both King and Snohomish County, so that everybody's paying the same thing. We, because that part of the city is not in King County, we have to have, tax them, or we need to tax them at the same right to provide, same rate to provide the same service. So that's what it boils down to, is we're just, everybody in the city is going to pay the same thing so that they get the same service. And this is a great thing. King County EMS is recognized internationally for the work that they've done and the system that they provided to the citizens that they serve. Cardiac, sudden cardiac arrest survival rates are just astronomical in King County. I don't think there's hospitals that have save rates that King County EMS has. So continued support of this provides our people with the best training to do the best job for the citizens that they serve. And I, full support of this.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or motion?
I move the recommended action.
Second.
It's moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember Spivey, to adopt the proposed ordinance establishing the 2018 EMS levy for Snohomish County portion of Bothell. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Did I miss anything, Tom? Did I miss anything, Tom?
Okay. All right. Seeing, seeing no discussion on the motion, go ahead, place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. Oh, that's right, I get one more part of the scripture. Okay, so we're going to adjourn the EMS board, and now we're going to reconvene as the Bothell City Council. Yes, the state makes us do that, I believe. It's the state's fault for this trade, right? Okay. Okay, so now we're on to AB 17-187, public hearing to consider recouping actual costs for certain public records and adopting statutory default fees for copies of public records. I'm going to officially open the public hearing, and we'll have a staff presentation by Deputy City Attorney Darcy Ellers.
Let me open my computer since I didn't bring paper, trying to be paper-free. As, as the agenda bill showed, the, the two, the new legislation that was passed that was effective in July authorized the city to enact additional public records fees. And part of, well, the existing legislation or Existing Public Records Act permitted us to have actual costs, to, to charge actual costs of copying. Doesn't include sort of staff time to find records, it's just the copying portion of, of taking records. And staff in the city clerk's office has, you know, and we had a discussion about what was possible to determine for actual costs. And the amount of staff time that would have to go into determining everyone who collects public records and, and then copies them to respond to a requister would, would take a substantial amount of time and energy to, to find out, you know, how much they get paid, how much time it takes to fulfill a request, different sizes of requests. So, so staff hasn't made, made that effort. But, but we have determined that in the limited number of cases we have where CDs are asked for or, or information needs to be put on a CD because of the type of information it was, that's being requested, though that actual cost we have done. In order to adopt actual costs as the amount we can charge, you have to have a public hearing. So we actually have reduced the amount of costs based on the work that, that staff did to take a CD, move over documents onto it as a test for how long it takes that person to, to put documents they've already collected onto a CD or a DVD. And so general staff did that in City Hall, but then also the police department did it separately. They are the ones who most often have a DVD or audio that has to be put onto a CD. So they did a separate one because their records are a little different than the records that general staff puts on to CDs or DVDs. So we have done actual cost studies in-house to determine how long it takes and who does those requests. So the amount, let me look at how much it's reduced, I can't quite remember the amount. I know that police was charging, I believe, $17 for their CDs or DVDs. And after determining how long it takes them and the two staff members who do that, their cost is now $5. So people are, will be paying less now to get CD and audio records from the police department. And also for our staff, I think our charge was $5 before and is now going to be $2. Let me look at the, oh, it was $8 and now it's going to be $2.65. So it doesn't take very long to put information onto a CD or DVD. So even though the amount is being lowered, we, we need to have a public hearing. So that is why we're having a public hearing on this, even though the amounts are being lowered, as a separate sort of matter, but it seemed to make sense to combine them. In order to charge default costs, which is the alternative to either actual costs or a standard sort of $2 fee or nothing, we have to determine that that was unduly burdensome for staff to determine actual costs. So part of this agenda bill is a little separate from the public hearing, and it's about taking default costs. You don't need to have a public hearing on adopting default costs as the cost for electronic records. That was what the new legislation was about. So when we are checking email, which is a substantial amount of the public records that staff fulfills are regarding emails, those are electronic records. And currently, before this legislation was passed and under our existing fee schedule, we can't charge anything to provide those electronic records. So that's, to, to adopt those default costs, you have to determine it would be unduly burdensome for staff to, to determine that cost. And just as an idea of something that goes into determining costs, it's, it's salaries, it's, and it's time. And salaries for, like I, as I said earlier, for all the people who find or who are copying public records in the different departments very substantially, and to, to take the time to do an actual cost study, which in, in our case, we did multiple times to make sure that the amount of time we were saying it took was average. So that, that is the information, at least on that. And I think you can see if anyone's here to, to object to the lowering of the cost for CDs and DVDs.
This is absolutely riveting, by the way.
I'm sure. That's why I got tasked with providing you the, the sort of staff side of it.
There's got to be people that want to provide public comment about us lowering the cost of DVDs that you get public records on, I'm sure, right? Any little guys want to say DVDs are totally outdated, I don't know what they are? Okay. Wow, do we have any deliberation on this item? No? Oh, Deputy Mayor has a question.
I have questions, just 'cause.
You were riveted.
Do we have any estimate of how much staff time is spent yearly to comply with public records requests, the part that we can't charge for?
I am not certain if we have an estimate, but under the new legislation, we now have to track it. So we will have an estimate for you next year. State law now requires that every municipality, our public agency, track that. And so under our, and then under the new system, the, that we have now done to GovQA to have people run their requests, and then we sort of send them out to the people that need to fulfill them, that system is tracking our time that it takes to fulfill requests. So we will have a better idea. I, I know that the state Attorney General's Office did a study the year before last about this, but it was just based on voluntary information provided by agencies, and it is significant. I have no doubt that the city of Bothell spends a significant amount of time responding to public records, not just the copying, but the finding, that's the bulk of our time. And as you know, we have a dedicated public records officer, and, and she provides a lot of assistance and support to the departments that need to do that, so.
And, and the legislation that was passed, am I remembering correctly that people can no longer come in and request every record we've ever had? So now that's not possible?
They can't frame their requests like that, but they could certainly get it, most of the records we have, with a lot of different requests and different ways.
And we don't have any control over those requests?
We do not.
We just have to comply?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last question was, how much money have we spent on the new system for public records requests in order to try to speed and streamline that process?
I am not sure about that. My better.
We contracted with GovQA in, I guess it was June, and the system cost us around $17,000. However, part of that system, part of the money spent on that was, we have cost savings from pulling records from our offsite, Iron Mountain, and we pulled 70% of those records over, cost savings of $1,000 a month approximately. So we use that cost savings to pay for the GovQA. It's kind of a, and then we got, I believe, $10,000 is what I budgeted, and then used the other, the seven for the savings we have on the records, having them here.
So it's definitely saving us money.
Yeah, and it's, it's going to, it's already helping us track, you know, and it's, it's a one system, so we can go back in the history and check anything. It's all standard, so all departments use the same system. Before, we had various different spreadsheets. Each department was using a different spreadsheet, it was crazy. So this allows customers to pay online for their records, and it also allows them to, if we want, they could go, we, we can look it up and say, oh, this one's already been, you know, we had a similar public records request, here's the records, everything's there, we can send it out again. And we don't have to then spend more staff time searching for something that somebody else asked for.
I'm just trying to point it out because I don't, I, I think the public doesn't know how much money we spend to comply with rules that we have no control over.
Correct. And, and as Darcy said, it's, it's not so much the, the time it takes to send the records out, it's researching, going through, making sure that, you know, there's not attorney-client privilege in those, redacting personal information so that, you know, somebody's social security number or, you know, whatever doesn't get out to the public. So there's a lot of redaction, and that's a lot of time to go through, especially when you're talking, you know, say somebody requests somebody's emails, and we have one request, it was 16,000 emails for like an eight-month period, so, or less. So it's a lot of time and it's a lot of work.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, I mean, as an example, I, I started in June, and I would say, on average, I don't every week spend the time on a public records reviewing records for redacted, materials that need to be redacted, but a cup, you know, at least on average, four hours a week on looking at public records. So that's just an example of one person, and I only look at the ones that are flagged by staff as potentially needing review, so.
Okay, is there any other questions or do we have a motion? Deputy Mayor?
I move the recommended action.
Second.
It's moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Agnew, to approve a resolution adopting the actual costs for providing electronic records on CDs, DVDs, both for general record and for police records, find that it will be unduly burdensome to calculate other actual costs and adopt the statutory maximum default fees for providing all other public records. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. Passes unanimously, unanimously with Councilmember Freed absent and excused. All right. Oh, this is an old version, the ordinance got moved up to consent, right? Ordinance for amending Chapter 1120, yep, okay. All right, new business, Councilmember Spivey, hope you feel better. AB 17-190, legislative platform and priorities for 2018. And we have the city manager to provide a presentation, it says.
Did we miss, did we skip something?
No, that's okay. Did I skip something, you guys?
No.
It got re-made or moved.
Oh, okay, I better be using the current one, okay. Okay. Yep, got it. Okay, sorry about that. AB 17-188, adoption of resolution approving the 2018 fee schedule. And, I don't even see that one here. How are you? Go ahead.
I'm good, I was pretty sure it was me.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. This is the time when departments update their sections of the city's fee schedule for the upcoming year. Fees are updated annually to continue to ensure for full cost recovery where it's not otherwise precluded by market conditions or by state, federal law. Fees that are changing by amounts other than the, by the rate of CPI inflation are highlighted for you in the staff report. And I'll note that many of these changes are from the Development Services Cost of Service and Fee Study, which was previously approved by council in July. Departmental representatives are here to answer any questions you might have. Before I open it up to questions, the fire department has some corrections that they wanted to go over with you. So I'll turn it over to the fire chief.
So, good evening. I know there's a lot of numbers in the fee schedule, and I apologize for coming up with this, Laura's passing out a revised, can you put the, how do I put that? So, and going over the numbers one last time today before the meeting, we noticed there appeared to be an anomaly in a few, few of the numbers from the fire section. And on the screen right now is that study that Ted was talking about that was approved in July. These are the, the actual numbers for these, a certain section in the fire report. And then I will put on the, this is the, the sheet I just gave you, and it refers to at the bottom exactly the pages in the AB report that this, these are on, it's like pages, bottom of page 112 and pretty much page 113. There was some kind of a transposition error in the numbers. So the base number was correct, but then when they put the, the cost of living, they put it at 3% on all the numbers. And when they did that, somehow these numbers, some numbers got 4%, some got 9%, some got, it was just, the numbers just did not look right. So we went through, double-checked them all. These are the correct numbers, the, on the right column should have been in the column on your document. Does that, does that make sense? Okay. So it gets a little confusing with the 17 and 18 numbers, but the, the right column replaces the numbers on those pages, 112 through 113. And I do apologize for being a little convoluted. We double-checked the rest of the numbers and they all are accurate.
So you increased all numbers by 3%?
Correct, cost, yeah. It was just a cost of living. That was the intent for these numbers, that the numbers were higher from 17 because of that study indicated that we weren't recovering the full cost of service. So we, we went ahead and did that and then added 3% to that for the, for the 18. It just didn't, for some reason, the numbers didn't get off on the report correct.
Okay. Does everybody understand that? Councilmember Zamber?
If you could leave that back on the.
Yeah, you bet.
Document reader. So when I look on page 112.
Yep.
There, in the agenda packet, there's a 2017 fee and a 2018 fee. And so if I look at 4A, which is the new commercial buildings NFPA 13 fee per riser, which corresponds with the first row, the 2017 fee was $308. And then in your, what you've just provided us, it says 2018 fee, which is $595. And then there's a 3% increase. Is that 3% increase from a, from a 2017 fee or a 2018 fee?
Yeah, that's where, again, it gets a little confusing. So that was the suggested fee, that first, the left column, was the numbers that the consultant said we should be charging in 18. That's, that's the revised numbers that we, just to get us back on track. So we had that number to start with, and then we added, we're supposed to add the 3% for what the number would be because we were so far behind on the first numbers, on the 17 numbers. This, from that study showed that we were not collecting the full cost recovery. So that first, the 595, it is a large increase from the 308, but that was just to get us up to what we were actually spending on those particular items. And that, that brought us up to that, and then we went and added 3% for the, for the 2018.
So when I look in the agenda bill, that $650 should be replaced by $613?
Correct, yes. So most of these went, on the, on the column that you have in the agenda bill, most of those numbers actually went down a little bit because they were, we're not sure what happened with the number, what, what they used. But we went back and did all those numbers with the 3% and based on the, the findings of the, of the study.
So did I miss it in the agenda bill? Is that narrative that you just described in this agenda bill, that essentially the 2017 fees are not even near cost recovery? We did the study this year, the consultants told us that to do cost recovery, we should actually be capturing $595 per riser and et cetera. And that the cost of inflation or, or whatever, which results in 3% increase, is what will be for 2018, what we're going to collect in 2018?
Correct.
So does that, is that narrative actually in the agenda bill? Because I think that's important to include how, in this particular set of costs and fees, how they, what the logic was from going from 308 to 595 to 613?
Understood. I, I don't know that it's in here, I can't speak to that directly, but that does make sense. It is confusing to, to see those numbers.
Because we do have a narrative in there about the new public spaces rental fee. I think this would be a good thing to add.
Okay. Can I pass it off to Finance? Any other questions I can help with on this part? Okay.
Other questions for anybody?
Councilmember Zamber?
Page 102 is where staff has provided some information about the public area use permit application fees, which are the new fees for the, the flex spaces that exist on Main Street and on 98th. on Main Street and on 98th. And then in the narrative on page 105, you said that there is currently only one permitted sidewalk cafe in the city's right-of-way. Is that on the multiway boulevard?
I'm going to yield to Don. Yes.
And so they're permitted, but we, have we collected a fee for them yet?
Just a permit fee only, and not, not the rental.
And what do you mean by the permit fee only?
There was a fee, public area use permit fee, and they paid, they did pay that.
Was it $125?
Around that.
Okay. And so that area is, is established, you know, they're not faced with the, the challenges of construction. So is it reasonable, or do we have, is it legitimate to, for example, charge one, you know, a sidewalk cafe on either 98th or the multiway boulevard, charge them for the space and the fees and exempt Main Street, who is dealing with the construction effects? I mean, is it, is it legally legitimate to charge one group fees but not another?
I guess it's a legal question.
You can, you can sort of divide up your spaces, so, so perhaps, like, all of Main Street or all of downtown, you know, you could have your zones, but picking out particular businesses or just one particular block, I believe we would have, we would have some sort of issues there.
We do, of course, I can give an example, we do have, for facility charges, for stormwater, we have, we have the downtown facility charge, and we have a citywide, I mean, there's, I think, like, Darcy just spoke to, I think you have to be careful on how you do that, but I think there might be, there might be a way, we'd have to research, I think.
But it sounds like in terms of loss of revenue with the one project that's on, on the multiway boulevard, the one cafe that's on the multiway boulevard, we're not talking about a huge loss of revenue, because they would pay the permitting fee and then the per-square footage fee, but they don't have, for example, a bollard moving fee, which is the biggest component of the fees.
Right, so that, but that's it, so that we're separating those permits out, there's one, there's a permit for the flex space if you want to use that, and there's a, there's a permit for the sidewalk area.
And if we did want to waive the fees entirely for one year, this always gives us the option of revisiting how that worked in the year, and then applying, whatever, a new fee for 2019.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
Any other questions, the staff? Ted, I have one for Mr. Burdette over there, and Kim and I have had a bit of a discussion on email about the fee for appeals, and I'm frantically flipping through here to find the exact page, but I think it's, it's currently at about $1,500, and I think we're proposing to make it $3,500.
Page 150.
Page 150?
15.
15, for those that are interested. So I remember when we've increased it to $1,530, oh no, it's just $3,039, not $3,500, is the new proposed amount, and so I, that one just kind of struck me, because I just felt like that was, you know, I'm thinking of a residence that there's somebody moving in, or, you know, there's a land use action happening right next door to them, and do we really want to charge $3,039 for somebody, you know, say it's a senior citizen or something like that, that's just hanging on to their location, but they do not agree with, obviously, the development that wants to go in and they want to appeal it. I just wanted to point that out to the council, and then hear from Tom, I know you had some philosophical thoughts about that, as well as, I was curious if you've talked to other cities to find out what their appeal cost is. I know I haven't asked you that before, but I was just curious if that was something that you, you might have been able to look into.
No, I don't think I have information on other cities tonight, but I have got, I have got the response that I sent to you. And, and generally speaking, appeals, and I did look at the code after you inquired about appeals, Mayor, and, and the code really puts them into two categories, generally speaking. They are either appeals of development review, or they're appeals of SEPA determinations, and general, and SEPA determinations can be fairly significant in terms of an appeal process, because it may also include an environmental impact statement. But normally, with the land use appeals, they're open record, they're, they ultimately go to the hearing examiner, and the hearing examiner makes the decision. So some cities may separate those fees, have a different fee for SEPA and a different fee for land use. We could do that, if, if that's of interest. And, but, but all cities, and this is generally true with, with appeals, they, they're a double-edged sword, they cut both ways, for residents and developers, it's the same fee. So in, in terms of, of cost recovery, and Peter Moya and I have talked about this in length, it's one of the items that can be directed by public policy. And if the public policy is to not recover the full, the full cost of an appeal, and these, and by the way, these are averages, and the initial number we came up with was like $5,000, based on two cases for 2013. So you can, you can really set it at a, at a rate that you, that you feel is best in terms of public policy. I wouldn't set it too low, I would recommend the council not set it too low, because in the city's past, the planning staff has told me that there were some frivolous appeals, just, just to kind of delay a decision on an item. So you, you sort of want to have an appeal fee that does not make it too, too easy for frivolous appeal, just to delay an action, for instance. But from, from where Peter and I left off, that's probably the one area that is most logical to have some, some input from the elected officials. So if that's, if that's the direction you want to go, certainly, certainly that can be accommodated. It, it means the public picks up a portion of the cost to do it.
And is the, as, with it set at $1,530, do you have any idea, are we seeing less frivolous appeals with it at that rate?
Yes.
Okay. That's all the questions I had. Deputy Mayor?
Just a follow-up question, do you, I'm not expecting a, a real, specific, accurate number, but how many appeals on average do, do we deal with per year?
I would, I think, two or, two or three a year is about right, yeah.
So we're talking, we're not going to be losing a lot of money if we're not taking the three?
No.
Okay. Do you, so, I wanted to point out to people, we've talked about cost recovery quite a bit tonight, and for those who haven't been following, which I don't expect everyone to watch every council meeting, the cost recovery discussion happened, and it's a policy decision, council asks staff to, when they're, they're putting together fees and whatnot, we ask them to aim for a full cost recovery. And so when, when staff presents fees, it's at our direction that it be what the cost is to the city to provide those, those services. That doesn't mean that we can't adjust it, but just so you know, staff has had direction from council that we're aiming for full cost recovery, and then on a whim, or whatever, we can decide that, in certain circumstances, that we won't do that. But I wanted to make it clear, it's not staff, it's council. If no one else wants to talk, I'm ready to make a motion.
I believe Councilmember, you know, has a question.
Thank you. On page 103, number seven, Safe Walk to School Review Residential Development, so is that on every residential development that comes in in 2018, we'll have that fee?
Yes, it's a state, it's a state requirement, state law, RCW covers it.
Okay, and in 2017, we did not have that?
No, we, we did, but in 2017, we were, we charged everything with hourly fees, so we, this is part of the fixed fee study.
Okay, and was it comparable to that 2512?
That, well, what we did is we, when we did the fixed fee analysis, we looked at what our costs are for an average project.
Okay.
And that's.
Thank you. And then number five on page, that same page going down into Parks and Recreation, it says to keep youth rate at 50% of the adult rate per policy, it's $17. Is that $17 per day, or just for one permit, or?
Councilmember, that's $17 per hour.
Per hour?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
I need to double-dip real quick, is that okay, you guys? I just have to ask real quick there. So traffic impact fees, specifically school impact fees, where, when do those come? Is that an annual thing?
So our traffic impact fees, we, we do studies, and then we, we put it in, in our ordinance, and the fees, there's a schedule in the actual code. So administratively, on January 1st, we can implement an increase at CPI for this, for 2018, and that's our intent.
So the school impact fee, I remember we adopted, our ordinance was like half of what the school wanted, and we said the next year, which would be next year, 2018, that we would charge the full amount they re, they wanted to, I guess we have to allow them to tax the residents' abothel, right? And so I was just curious.
I'm, I'm not familiar with the school impact, I'm not sure.
It was not what we did?
I'm not sure what, about what happened last year, I apologize for that, but under the RCWs for school impact fees, we do have to implement the impact fees that the school district has requested that we implement. We don't have the authority to, to limit them unless we have an agreement with the school district.
We did it, yeah, they, they asked for an amount, and we said only half for the first year.
They, they're, well, like I said, I'm not sure what happened last year, but I would imagine that there was some agreement with the school district that way, because I believe that North Shore didn't have school impact fees until last year. So it was probably something where staff worked with the school district to have an agreement to, or, to, to change them for one year, because under the statute, the school district has the one, is the one that has the authority to, to say what they should be, and the city just has to adopt them and, and transmit them.
So that's separate from this whole deal? We don't have to worry about that tonight? Okay.
Yeah, that would be, that would be when you adopted the school impact fee ordinance, and it's written into the code those impact fees are, they're not, they're not usually part of a fee schedule.
Okay, so administratively just goes up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, well, yes, through, through the legislation you passed.
Okay. All right, is there any other questions, or are we ready for motion? Councilmember Agnew?
I adopt that proposed resolution approving the 2018 fee schedule, rescinding the resolution number 1354 in 2016.
It's moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil, to adopt the proposed resolution approving the 2018 fee schedule and rescinding resolution number 1354 from 2016. Is there an amending motion? There we go, go ahead.
I'd like to make an amending motion that, for the fee category, number 12, public area use permit application fees, that we waive the fees entirely as a first-year pilot program for the outdoor dining permit fee sidewalk only, the outdoor dining permit fee flexible zone, provided that applications are received before, on or before March 15th, and that we waive the annual use charge per square foot for the first-year pilot program.
I second that.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by Councilmember Agnew, to basically leave the permit, but re, eliminate the fees for the first year, for this year, for the flex area, the sidewalk, dining, and the square-footage rental fee, is that correct? Was that all three?
That is correct.
Okay.
And can I speak to my motion?
Yeah.
So I appreciate that we are trying to move to full cost recovery, but I think part of the, what we do is to spur activity, and I think that this is one way to do that. These are pretty nominal fees, some what might look at, but for people, for business owners that have undergone the change with the Main Street construction project, they might see that in that year, they wouldn't be able to even recoup that $500-plus fee in the business that they do. So I think this, in the first year, this gives them the opportunity to see how this would work for them. They still have to provide a permit, they still have to, you know, follow the rules of a permit, they're just not paying the fees associated with them. I think if we do it for one year, then that leaves the door open, that if it is a, you know, a very successful program, then it is reasonable to charge fees in the following year. It also gives us an opportunity to assess, just in general, how this process works. So that is the basis. I did specify, because there's, for the outdoor dining permit fee, the flexible zone, it was, it, there were two amounts, $300 before March 15th and $750 after March 15th. The intent, the intent for that, with the, I'm imagining with the difference in costs, was there's expense in moving bollards, and if staff can go through and move all the bollards at once, then there's, you know, economy of scale doing that one time versus having to go back and do it later. So the, the fee, the fee wave does not include permit fees for move, for the outdoor flex zone after March 15th.
Deputy Mayor has a, I have a point of clarification for you.
I'm totally confused now, because I thought, I knew what you were proposing, and just, can you just restate that again, what, what you're proposing to remove?
So I-
Could you go, could you go to the page and just, line by line, and you could just tell us?
So this is page 102 of the agenda packet, section 12. And there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 items related to the public area use permit fees, and I am proposing waiving the fees, so, for example, $125 outdoor dining permit fee sidewalk only. I'm not proposing to change the annual renewal or the railing permit, if applicable. And then to waive the fee for the outdoor dining permit fee dash flex zone, which is $300 on or before March 15th. And to waive the square foot, square footage fee of 25 cents per square foot for year And that's my amending motion.
Okay, thank you.
Was it seconded?
By Tom, I think?
Yeah, it was seconded, yeah.
So I wanted to make an amendment to that motion. I'm in agreement with all of it, except for the, the, I guess it's 307.50, because those are- I'm in agreement with all of it, except for the, I guess it's 30750, because those are tied to the cost of removing the bollards, and I think it's fair for us to charge for that, unless I'm wrong, because someone will tell me if I'm wrong, but that's my understanding. And so I'd like to remove that from the motion. I'm in support of all the rest of it.
I imagine maybe for procedure's sake, we should vote on the underlying amending motion, and then if it fails, we can go to that one.
You can amend him an amendment, if we want to, yeah.
Yeah, I just asked the mayor, I wasn't just making it.
But I see what you're saying, too. Well, I don't know what to do there.
Is there a second for the amending amendment to the amendment?
There's an amendment of an amendment, but we don't know if the amendment's going to pass that we're amending.
So the deputy mayor can make an amending motion to the amended, to the amendment that's already been made, so you don't need to necessarily vote on this underlying amendment first. You can vote on the amendment as proposed by, the amendment to the amendment as proposed by the deputy mayor, and if that carries or fails, you still then would go to the underlying amendment, and then to the underlying motion.
That's, okay, thank you.
But first, I need a second.
So then, so yeah, Deputy Mayor needs a second, so Deputy Mayor proposes to reinstate basically the outdoor dining permit fee flexible zone that would be stricken if we passed the many motion that Councilmember Sandberg moved, and seconded by Agnew. Is there a second to the Deputy Mayor's motion? I'll second it, just so, just for fun. Yep.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
So the explanation of the cost recovery says 50% cost recovery in the first year, and low charge first year down below, in some of the numbers that we're talking about. Does that have a reflection of the 125 and the 100, these numbers that we're talking about, or are they, is that the, the actual number?
So these are the actual numbers?
So that we're going to be charging 50% of that in the first year?
No, the number's the number.
Well, the numbers, the numbers that are there are 50% of the cost recovery.
Right.
Okay.
So you have to multiply it by 2 to get to 100% cost recovery.
So the second year, it would be 250, not 125, correct?
Yes.
For the sidewalk only use, yep.
Okay, and then, I hate to ask this question, but is this only pertaining to Main Street?
No, this would be city, this is a citywide, we're, this would be citywide. Right now, as I spoke to earlier, there's only one permitted use, and so by and large, it's mostly going to be in the downtown area, but I would, I would see some of these probably happening, happening on multiway boulevard, maybe on some of the side streets joining at 185th, 183rd, that area, so, but.
So it's citywide?
But it's citywide, all right.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so is there any more discussion on the amendment to the amending motion? Seeing none, oh, Deputy Mayor, oh, didn't you speak to your, you already spoke to your motion?
Well, now I don't know if I need to make another amending motion.
Well, let's pass this one first.
If we wanted to make it just waiving the fees for just Main Street, do I need to make the motion now before we go into, right?
You can't make an amendment to an amendment.
Okay, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay, so the many motion is to basically charge for the outdoor dining permit fee flexible zone both before and after March 15. Any further discussion on the vote? Go ahead, place your vote. Fails, 322, with Councilmember Spivey and Councilmember Freed absent and excused, so we're back to the many motion, which is Councilmember Sandberg's motion, which is to change, strike, sorry, the outdoor dining permit fee sidewalk only to nothing for 2018, the annual renewal, I believe you had in there, right? Strike that to?
No, I'll just reiterate.
Okay.
It's to exempt the fee for outdoor dining permit fee sidewalk only. Keep the next two the same, annual renewal, railing permit the same, strike the fee for the first year only for the outdoor dining permit fee flexible zone, if and only if the applicant applies on or before March 15, and then to not charge the per square footage fee of 25 cents per square foot in the first-year pilot program.
I'd like to make an amending motion, that the fee, fees waived in the, the stated motion apply only to Main Street, the two blocks of Main Street. I don't, can I speak to my motion, or no?
No, is there a second? That is on mine, there's no second. You got no second motion to your many motion. Okay, so we're back to the amending motion, which Councilmember Sandberg has been very graciously given us three different times, and now I understand what it is, I think everybody else does as well. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Councilmember Agnew?
I think we all have seen Main Street suffer during this trialing times that we've been dealing with, and, and we can't do anything financially to try to help out. I think this is a little, little thing that we can do. I also hope that we, as a city, during the better weather in the summertime, have little music on the weekends, close off Main Street, bring in more people, have an arts and crafts fair, have, have things along those lines that will bring some of the people back to our downtown. So I definitely support this motion.
Deputy Mayor?
I think you can probably tell from the discussion on council that we all think that it's in Bothell's best interest to have a thriving and healthy Main Street. You've been through the wringer the last few years, and I'm glad that we're cutting you a break, and I think historically, the sidewalk spaces in front of your businesses have not had to pay a fee, and so that doesn't make sense to me that we would start doing that. I do think it's unfortunate that we chose not to do it for the, to cut the fees for everyone, considering we've already charged people on the multiway, so it seems unfair and capricious to just lift all the fees after we've already gone through and charged people, but I will be supporting this motion.
So I wanted to speak to this, too, real quick. I've, I've been a little, well, not a little, quite hesitant actually to, to strike these fees, and we've received a lot of public comment that, you know, the fire, still to this day, is just detrimental to me that that happened, and especially when you pile that on to what, everything else that's happened downtown. I think it's important to look at opportunities to, to help the businesses, but the, but the real interesting thing, I think one of the speakers said tonight, that I, that also just kind of rang a bell in my head, is that like, well, why wouldn't we, you know, it's like, it's like selling something, like if you wanted somebody to buy some oranges, well, you cut them up and you give people pieces of them to see if they like it or not, and then they'll buy one. And I think that's the same for these new uses and these new areas, to the, you know, right out of the gate, just make them buy it, and just, and don't let them taste the orange, but make them purchase it and hope things go for the better. I think it, it would be a good, a good faith thing for the city to say, okay, well, let's just try this out for the first year, we're obviously still going to require a permit, we are going to require this ADA, especially with the sidewalk stuff, that people still can get around, and then also in the flex places, flex spaces. So I'm going to support the, the underlying motion. I wish the Ballard movement thing wasn't in there, but I'm, I'm fine with it, so.
Can I ask a question?
Councilmember Sandberg.
A little bit of a brain fart, is this, this is the vote on the amending motion?
Just the amending motion.
Not the underlying motion yet?
Not the underlying motion. Okay, is there any other discussion on the many motion? Seeing none, go ahead, place your vote. The many motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Spivey and Freed absent and excused, so now we're back to the underlying motion, I believe we have another amending motion, Councilmember Sandberg?
I'd like to make an amendment that for the appeals, that we increase the 2017 fee of $1,530 by 3% instead of the recommended roughly 100% increase.
Second.
So the fee would be $1,576?
Yes.
Okay, is there, would you like to speak to your underlying motion? I'm sorry, that was moved by Councilmember Sandberg, seconded by the Deputy Mayor to increase the, or appeal fee by 3% from 2017, which would take it to, from 1,530 to $1,576.
Yeah, I think that, according to what our community development director said, is that the fee is, is not so high as to prevent the average citizen from going through an appeal process, but it's not so low that it's, you know, that, that it, that it allows too many spurious, or whatever you call them, appeals. And I think it's important for our, our citizens to feel like they can appeal a process, and I, I just feel with a, with a fee of $3,000-plus dollars, that would just be very cost prohibitive. And so I think, I think where it is, is, you know, we're, we're striking a, a good balance, and I just pick 3% because other costs have been rising by 3%, so there wasn't anything magical about that number.
Okay, I appreciate the amendment, too, I didn't, I did not like the 3,000-some-odd-dollar appeal fee. Did you have any comments, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think it's important, I'm supporting this amendment, because I think it's important in a, a healthy community, that we allow citizens to appeal decisions and feel like they have a way, I guess, to, to, I don't know if fight's the right word, but to have a say, and to feel like they have some sort of recourse when they think something's gone wrong in the process. I just think it's really important in a healthy community for citizens to feel like they have that option, so I appreciate the amendment.
All right, seeing no other discussion, go ahead and place your vote. Passes 4 to 1 with Councilmember Agnew in the negative, and Councilmember Spivey and Freed absent and excused. We're now down to the underlying motion. Any further discussion on the underlying motion, or we tired of talking about 2008, 2018 fees? Seeing we are done, go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously with Councilmember Spivey and Freed absent and excused. Now that I've got the agenda, okay, so next on the agenda is legislative priorities. City Manager.
Good evening, Council. So staff wanted to try something different for the upcoming 2018. In the past, council had put together with staff's assistants, a very short legislative platform that provided us some guidance through the legislative sessions, and it's the document that we used when we went down for city action days, but it didn't really provide us the opportunity to be quickly responsive to legislative matters, or requests for letters of opposition or support that are coming from our legislature. And so we've drafted, based on the, to the best of our ability, what we perceive to be your policies, your direction, with the Washington Association of Cities, a legislative platform that outlines the council's priorities for 2018, and, and that's attached to this staff report, and what we did was, we highlighted in yellow the items that were in your prior platform, and then you can see the areas that we've added. This is very much a policy document, and so, again, this is an opportunity for you to let us know, what are your priorities for the coming year, so that we can be responsive and get a letter out of, so again, support or opposition, or maybe a letter that's just neutral, it depends on the situation. But Bothell wants to get more engaged, one of the things we've heard from the council is, you want to be out there, you want to be part of legislative decisions that are happening, and be engaged with what's happening in the state and regionally, and this platform provides us an opportunity to be more timely and more engaged with those matters. And so we ask that you've reviewed this, make any changes, add or additions or subtractions that you feel are, are not appropriate, or are appropriate to be added, and approve it, so we can then move forward and be more engaged in legislation. From this document, we'll create our Legislative Action Days document, a much, much shorter version of this, that we can hand out when we go and meet with our legislature legislators in, I believe it's January or February, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there any questions for the city manager? We do need to, we'll have a motion to, to pass this, so if there's changes you'd like to see, now is a good time. Deputy Mayor?
So I really, really appreciate the time and thought that went into this, I think it's got a great set of guiding principles that we can use when we make other decisions. For instance, when Sound Cities Association contacts us and say, "Quick, we need you to sign this letter in support of," and not have to have necessarily a discussion on the dais at the last minute to, to figure out if council supports it. In that vein, I remember earlier this year, I asked for us to sign a letter about anti-discrimination for housing, and I'd like to know council's thoughts. One of, one of the things that I thought about adding, and I'm not sure how the rest of council feels, was something about equal access to housing. We don't have an ordinance yet that, that, for, I don't know what the best way to say, but we don't have an ordinance that basically is an anti-discrimination ordinance when it comes to how housing is paid for, and so I'd like to see something like that in this document, if the rest of council agrees. And the other one that I thought about adding was something to the extent of key, allowing the city, or we're, how should I put that, opposing, limiting the city's ability to set and collect impact fees. We know that there are lots of powerful lobbies in Olympia that are constantly trying to limit our ability to set or collect impact fees, that's probably one of the reasons that the school district wasn't able to ask for impact fees until they were at crisis point, and so I'd like to be able to add that as well to the legislative agenda, or platform, sorry.
So I think we'll make a many motions later, but it's good to kind of hear discussion from each other, unless we should, do you guys want to just make a, make a motion to approve this, and then we'll have some many motions again, just like the rates? Go ahead, Councilmember Agnew.
I adopt that we adopt legislative platform in the 2018 legislative priorities as presented.
It's moved by Councilmember Agnew, seconded by Councilmember McNeil, to adopt the legislative platform in 2018 legislative priorities as presented. Any discussion on the motion, or do we have any amendments? Deputy Mayor?
I was hoping to have a discussion, but now that it's made, I have to make my amending motions, is that how it works? Okay. I don't know how anyone feels about the two things that I brought out. So I guess I'd like to add an amending motion that we also include on, under, I think it was land use, hold on.
I would, hold on, no.
Okay, under land use planning and community and economic development, oppose legislation limiting the city's ability to collect, set and collect impact fees.
Okay, I'll second that. Is there any discussion on the many motion? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote.
I assume that if, if any, if anything has legal concerns associated with it, somebody would raise their hand. Okay, okay.
Okay. Any discussion on the, on many motion? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously, Councilmember Spivey and Freed absent and excused, and I believe you have another many motion, Deputy Mayor?
I do. Trying to, I was hoping there'd be discussion, so I could make it a little more clear. Under community health. Under community health services, oh, community, human services, parks and recreation, I'd like to support legislative efforts that support equal access to housing.
And so, I'm sorry, where was that at?
Under community, human services, parks and recreation, or, I'm not certain what the language should be. I'm saying equal access to housing, but I really mean anti-footfight discrimination towards housing.
So anti-housing discrimination legislation, support of anti-discrimination, or anti-discrimination during housing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Clear as mud, right?
I get it, I'll second that. Is there any discussion on the motion? Clear. Go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously, Councilmember Spivey being freed absent and excused. I can't make an amending motion, but I just wanted to point out that I do have issue with, under environment, the second bullet, it says oppose legislation that imposes undue hardship on local agencies by requiring them to do, by requiring them to implement onerous environmental regulations. I just think there's a lot of issues with that statement, and I don't know of too many environmental regulations that are overly onerous, so. But again, I can't make an amending motion.
I'll make the motion that we strike oppose legislation that imposes undue hardship on local agencies by requiring them to implement onerous environmental regulations.
I'll second that. Do you want to speak to your motion?
No.
Okay. I'd love to see you speak to my second. So I work in this field, and I really, I struggle with when I see statements like that, because as far as I can tell, environmental regulations are typically pretty level-handed. If they were onerous, the Department of Ecology probably wouldn't exist, so it's in my opinion, it's in the best interest of the community that we make sure the environment's protected as we move forward in time, so. Seeing no other discussion, go ahead and place your vote. Passes unanimously, Councilmember Spivey being freed absent and excused. Any more amending motions? Seeing none, go ahead and place your vote on the underlying motion, which is...
Can I speak to the underlying motion?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Okay. So I'm going to support this. This is something new that, for council, I mean, we've always had our legislative agenda, but previously, when burning issues came up, they were added to the agenda and we discussed them, and we've always been kind of reluctant to weigh in specifically on voter-approved either levy measures or, you know, advisory votes, because at least previously, the opinion has been, let's let the voters decide for themselves. But I can appreciate that some items would come up last minute, but I hope that that would be a very limited situation, because I think it's important for the entire council to discuss any formal position that the city takes, either in support or opposition of items, and you never know, not saying anything against our mayor and our current city manager, but positions change, and so we don't want to invest that kind of authority in a few people, we want to maintain that control that people elected us to do, to discuss issues like this as a full body.
You have my word, any letter that we send out, we'll definitely come back to this body, but usually it's one of those things we got to send out quickly, we just don't have a lot of time, but. I totally appreciate that sentiment. Deputy Mayor?
I just wanted to weigh in real quickly. I appreciate that sentiment, I just know that when you're on various boards and commissions, things come up, and they don't always come up before a council vote, and so it's nice to have the option to be able to go into a board or commission meeting, a regional board, and state the city's position based on something.
All right, Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah, I'd agree with all that. I would say, sitting on several committees, it's also at times important to make sure that we do bring stuff back to council, but I'm actually looking forward to the shorthand version in getting back up to Olympia to do the good work, to make sure that we're making sure Bothell's heard, so thank you very much for all the hard work on this.
All right, seeing no other discussion, go ahead and place your vote, and the vote is to adopt the legislative platform in 2018 legislative priorities as amended. Passes unanimously with Councilmembers Spivey being freed absent and excused.
And Mayor, if I may, I'd like to thank Catherine Jensen, she's the one who championed this and put all this together for us, so really appreciate the hard work.
Thank you, Catherine. Oh, somebody wants a break, let's see how much we have left, we're whipping through this. Yeah, let's take a break, everybody ready for a break? So let's take a 15-minute break, we'll be back at 8:10.